I'd like to welcome everyone to the Carteret County Board of Commissioners meeting June 17th, 2024. I'd like to ask Commissioner Mansfield to lead us in the pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Reverend Tammy Lee of St. Paul's Episcopal Church to lead the invocation, please. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you. You pray with me, please. Wise and loving God, we, your people gathered here this day, say thank you for your goodness and loving kindness toward us and all whom you've made. We are grateful for your many and abundant blessings, your providence which sustains the world we live in and the lives we live. We pray for all your public servants here gathered and for their constituents. Grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is disagreement, peace in their lives and joy in their daily task. Finally, we pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give them assurance of what is most needed in Carteret County and then grant them the courage and faith to pursue it. It is in your most blessed name that we offer these prayers. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. I need to recuse myself from item number eight on the consent agenda. So.
You can amend the consent agenda?
Need to amend the consent agenda. If we want to go ahead and start with the regular agenda, we'll do it first and then we'll go to the consent and Mark will take over from there. Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to add on as item number... Item number 12, or actually 11A. After we do board appointments, we'll talk about boards and some questions about boards.
11A. I'll make a motion where you approve the amended agenda.
So, well, we need to, um, there needs to be a second to that motion.
Second.
Vote on the amendment?
Yeah, the amended agenda. All those in favor of the amended agenda?
Not now. It was, Mr. Chadwick, did you vote to approve the amended agenda, to make the motion to approve the amended agenda?
Correct.
And Commissioner Kavanaugh seconded the motion, was it Commissioner Wheatley?
Commissioner Wheatley.
Commissioner Wheatley seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The consent agenda, item number seven, has not, that contract has not been, is not ready for approval, so I'd like to make a motion to remove item number seven from the consent agenda.
Seconding that.
All those in favor of removing item number seven from the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. Passes. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh to approve the amended consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Chadwick. All those in favor to approve the amended consent agenda, please raise your right hand. Mr. Chairman, you are back with the charge.
Um, you have to remit me for item number, you have to remit me, you didn't. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You, you, you were reticent, you didn't participate, you're back in the.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Our next item is item number five, recognition of the April, May, and June Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month Award. Mr. Nick Wilson.
Alright, good evening, Commissioners and residents. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the outstanding contributions of three of our team members who've been recognized as the Jamie Hicks Long Employees of the Month for April, May, and June of 2024. First up for April is Shai Odom. Shai serves as the Branch Manager for the Carteret County Public Library System in Beaufort. Shai has been with the library system for over 13 years showcasing exceptional dedication and expertise. As Branch Manager, she oversees the daily operations, assists patrons with information, books, movies, and provides support with computers, fax, and copy machines. Shai is known for her extensive knowledge on a wide range of topics, making her the go-to person at the Beaufort branch. She recently demonstrated her creativity through a yarn art library program, creating colorful yarn displays on canvas. Shai goes above and beyond in assisting patrons, including helping a visitor recently trace their family history by researching various sources and collaborating with the local museum. Shai's commitment to excellence, creativity, and community service makes her deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Shai. We appreciate you, all that you do. Also, the summer reading program kicked off this weekend, so if you guys want a good book to check out, go see them. Alright, moving on to May is Lindsey Burton, administrative officer for Carteret County Economic Development. Lindsey plays a pivotal role in our community's economic growth. She implements and coordinates programs that foster a thriving business environment, showcasing her strong analytical skills and dedication to business success. Lindsey exceeds these expectations by bringing creativity to our social media content and being an outstanding team player, always ready to assist others. Her willingness to help extends beyond her team, supporting the Small Business Center and providing valuable guidance to new employees. Lindsey's attention to detail is evident in her responsible resource management, ensuring effective use of county resources. She consistently delivers exceptional customer service, properly responds to new questions with a friendly, professional demeanor. Congratulations, Lindsey. Your dedication and commitment are a valuable asset to Carteret County as well. Okay, lastly, for June, we're going to celebrate Janet Cannon. She is an Economic Services Quality Assurance Analyst with DSS. Janet, who has been with the county since 2010, ensures compliance with all federal and state requirements in social service income maintenance programs. She conducts quality control reviews of work-first cash assistance, food and nutrition services, and Medicaid cases. Her positive attitude and diligence were evident as she reviewed state-requested cases for audit and uploaded case information to NCFAST, leading to exceptional audit scores for the county. Beyond her professional duties, Janet supports community awareness of Gabriel babies. This is a program through her church that helps mothers in crisis by providing supplies and clothing geared to the baby's first year of life. Her referral to this program not only saves our agency, DSS, money but significantly benefits clients. Janet's care and compassion for clients and colleagues make her a valuable part of our team. Congratulations to Janet for outstanding contributions and a well-deserved recognition of employee of the month. So, Shai and Lindsey, they are here. Janet could not make it tonight, so I will be sure she gets her certificate. So, Shai and Lindsey, step up. And we'll get a picture.
I'm gonna stand in between you here.
There you go.
The other commissioners, stand up.
Surest person in Carteret County.
There we go. Alright, round of applause for these two.
Alright, our next item is item number six, public comments, and we have one speaker tonight, and that is Brian Nicolo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Nicolo at 1502 Salter Path Road. I come to you tonight to speak on my opposition to the use of the county voting election computers in the, our election process. I do this only, I don't have my normal layout of my speaking words here, so I'm just gonna ad hoc it here. But suffice it to say that when I do speak on this, I'm not, I'm not impugning the efforts and the workers, the poll workers, the boards of elections, or they're great professionals, so I don't want to come across like that. And I'm not up here to make a name for myself, I'm not running for political office, I am a, what I consider a patriot, and I'm talking to maybe 100 people that are gonna watch this on replay, and I'm gonna try to reach those three percenters, and if you know what I, if you know, you know what three percenters refers to. Those are the ones who want to contact me. But I speak against the voting election computers based on their vulnerabilities. They do have catastrophic vulnerabilities that can be exploited. They're costly, and they have lack of transparency, and not only lack of transparency, they also, the, the group that operates the voting computers have lack of accountability to the citizens. So, I'm just gonna go ahead, I got these contracts that the, we received here, and I'm just gonna read a few things. For example, we use the DS200 model, and, flip to readable page here. They, we get 40 of those and they cost $230,000. 50 tote bins we get for $225 a piece, and they cost $11,250. This is back in 2017, by the way. So, and there's other years, but this is what I have tonight for you. Four gigabyte jump drive, we purchased five of those at $105 a piece, so $525. Eight gigabyte jump drive, five of those at $210 a piece for $1,050. Model DS200 scanners, we get 40 of those at $115 a piece for $4,600. Equipment operations training day, we get that training for $1,650. The poll worker train the trainer day, we get $1,650. We actually got a loyalty discount of $42,150 because we're loyal to our election systems, right, our election computers, and we got a customer loyalty discount on that. Shipping and handling, $3,800 for a total cost of $212,000, and this is 2017. And these are computer systems, and there's a whole thing that I read through, highlighted certain areas, but I'll talk about termination. This agreement may be terminated in writing at any time by either party if other party breaches any material provision hereof and does not cure such breach within 30 days after it receives written notification thereof from the non-breaching party. I think they are in breach of, their, their systems are in breach of election security because they are computers, they are vulnerable. The advent of AI makes it more easily for these things that are connected to the network, by the way, can be connected to the network. They're supposed to be air gap, they can be air gap, but they can also be connected to the network. And I'll wrap it up by finishing up on my two awareness items. The awareness items I speak about are currently still have political hostages in the federal prisons as a result of our elections systems, and also be aware of human trafficking. We have 85,000 women and children that have been sent into unvetted sponsors due to our open borders, and this is happening in every local community, so if you see something, say something, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Item number seven is a public hearing for the proposed rezoning of a 2.11 acre parcel located at 121 Eagle Road, Newport, R15M to B1CZ, and, Mr. Foxworth, are you already there?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much. So, y'all should be familiar with this parcel, it's come before us before. It's right there in the corner of Hibbs and Eagle Road. Right there as you're turning, if you're coming from 24, it will be on the left as you turn into Eagle Road. Property is currently vacant, is bordered by single-family to the north and south, business and a single-family dwelling to the east, and a vacant parcel to the west. Is bordered by R20 to the north and south, B1 and R15M to the east, and R15M to the west. So, this is a conditional zoning request. The last time it appeared before you, I don't believe it was, but it's a conditional zoning request, which you're familiar with, having done this several times before. The only use that they've asked for is a landscaping business here. So, with conditional zoning, they could ask for a multitude of uses that both the commissioners and they would have to agree on, but they've asked for a landscaping business only. And in their permit application, they listed several, several conditions of that. One was maintaining Eagle Road as a public right-of-way, so two cars can pass in both directions. Maintain Eagle Road so that it's passable under all normal conditions except extreme weather. Adding new gravel and grading when necessary, such as filling the potholes or clearing any obstructions to prevent normal flow of traffic. If you remember, that was a point of contention when they, they were here last time. 25 surrounding property owners have been notified. Staff has received eight objections and two no objections. At its May 13th meeting, the planning commission voted six to zero to unanimously recommend approval of this. Glad to answer any questions.
Six to one on approval?
Six to none. There were six members there, they voted six in favor, none opposed.
Does this property access just via Eagle Road, or does it have access only to Higby Road?
The only access I'm aware of is off of Eagle Road.
And they're gonna maintain the entirety of Eagle Road?
No, sir, I believe just up past there, just to their, their property line.
It's a pretty rough road here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have. Yes, sir.
When, hold on now, so, they're the, they are the, they own the parcel behind them also, but we're just talking about they're gonna maintain the 121 foot with the piece that they're asking for the rezoning on.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just for clarification.
The, their property behind it, they've not asked for rezoning or, or anything else at this point.
And they, the last time we had some issues with the condition of the property, and that's been cleaned up based upon the conversation you and I had?
Yes, sir, it has.
Who maintains Eagle Road now?
So, it's a private road, so the citizens of Eagle Road.
They'll chip in and...
I don't know what arrangement they have, but the burden of maintaining that road currently falls on them.
Who's willing to take it on from Higby Road to the end of his property?
Yes, sir.
Is that proposed parking lot with the site plan, is that proposed to be gravel also, do you know, or just don't?
I'm not certain because we've not reviewed it to that level of site plan approval, only, only rezoning. But Mr. Carrillo is here tonight, if you do have questions specific for him.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Shannon has the question.
I've got, I've got a couple of comments. So, I don't know that they'll interpret it to questions or not, but I wasn't fully on board with denying it last time, and you, you know, with the conditional, I think we, we, that was the reasons that we denied it last time. I think we've covered those this time. So, we've done numerous rezonings on, on Hibbs Road and the 24 corridor, and since I've been up here, and for, and similar, the conditional B1Z, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I don't know, I'm not, I don't think that that property is, that piece of property in its configuration is, and that point specifically is not really conducive to a residential lot. I think the best use for it would be a, a conditional business, and, and the biggest concern at our last meeting, like we just stated, was the, the maintaining of the entrance off of 24, I mean, excuse me, off of Hibbs Road onto Eagle Road. And if that's the condition, that they're responsible for that and to maintain that access, I have no issue with, with granting the rezoning. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do.
You said it's a private road. Who actually owns the road? Just the adjoining homeowners?
Yes, sir.
They're responsible for, for some road front, their property?
Have we even looked at that deed? Do we, are we positive on that?
Yeah, I have not looked at that deed specifically.
It's one of, have they even looked, have we looked to see what the deed says? I mean, there, there's numerous orphaned roads in Carteret County, similar to this condition they've had to deal with.
Was that your question?
Yeah, I noticed that, that's lot 121. What's the apart? The portion to the northwest of that, the adjoining property, is that all part of that one same lot?
No, sir, it's two separate lots.
Okay.
And they're only asking for reclassification of the front lot?
Of the front lot, yes, sir.
The same person owning both lots?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody here to speak from the public?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just we need to make a motion to go in public here. Motion to go in public here.
And as I mentioned, the applicant's here tonight.
All those, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Talking for or against?
It could be either.
Either one.
It could be either.
I can address a couple of questions they all had.
Okay.
I'm the applicant, and, excuse me. So, I'm Brian Reals Carrillo. My parents are the owners of the land. Me and my dad are the partners of the business that are trying to, to put on that property. Mentioned a couple of things about who maintains the road. So, the residents have mentioned that they maintain the road, but it doesn't look like it's ever been touched at all, and maybe they have in the past, but in the last three years that we've been there, I haven't seen the road change at all, it just gets worse. The other thing being, Mr. Chin is correct about the use of that land. We, if we can't put a business there, we can't do anything really with it because we actually got a solar report, and there's no way for us to put a septic tank there, so we're probably just gonna have like, you know, a couple porta potties or something like that out there. We don't need much since we're only gonna be there in the mornings and afternoons if we get approved for landscape use. So, um, there's that, behind, that section behind the 2.1 parcel to the northwest here is residential. We do have approved permits for that, so we're gonna keep that strictly residential, put houses there. Nothing crazy, everything's been cleared out, there's no gravel, no nothing out there, it's just bare, you know, land out there.
Last time came for the board, there was a bunch of pile of rocks and.
That's right. Yeah, we were using it to kind of just get some concrete out of jobs and stuff like that. We had some debris and stuff like that, but we, we've gotten that all cleared out, it is clean.
Any other questions? There's a concern among some of the residents about noise. Is there gonna be any type of?
No.
Wood chipping, stuff grinding, anything?
No, nothing, nothing like that. I mean, it's just gonna be for our equipments to be stored there. You know, we'll load up in the mornings, be gone most of the day, and come back in the evenings, put, put our tools, pull our stuff away. We won't really be there too much other than to, you know, load and unload in the mornings.
You have a, gonna have a storage area there for plants that you're using in your work?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Are you, are you gonna be storing vegetation, plants?
I mean, every now and then we have some plants left over from jobs that we just keep till we may be used to the next job, but as far as like a nursery goes or anything like that, where we're buying like wholesale plants, no, sir, we don't plan on having, like a, like a yard.
You don't, do you do any kind of retail sales of palm trees and stuff like that?
No, just the ones that we sell to customers. We do keep some in stock just to be able to take them in and out when, when we need them for jobs, but nothing to where it's like, you know, where we have constant semi-trucks being delivered every, no, we won't have anything like that.
But to Commissioner Shin's comment about not being fit for residential, I could put a pretty nice house on it, two, two acre piece of land.
It won't park.
It does not perk?
Does not.
It does not what? I'm sorry?
Perk.
You were talking about using it.
Thank you for clearing that up, I wasn't familiar with that.
Now, all those lots around it perk?
Yes. Somehow, I'm not too sure how, and the lot behind it does, for, well, for three, three, three-bedroom houses, they will. It's about a three-acre lot.
And they're gonna have a 10-foot stream and also a five-foot grass buffer between you and the neighbors?
That's right. Yeah, we'll keep, yeah, we'll keep that buffer, put some plants out.
Wide buffer, is that required, Gene?
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Go ahead, come, come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Charles Tolson. My address is 106 Kelly Lane.
Could you speak up, please?
Yeah, Charles.
I'll have to lean down then, I see. My name is Charles Tolson. My address is 106 Kelly Lane. And I'm gonna read, try to read through my points quick, but you know, if you need to stop me, ask some questions, feel free, go right ahead.
Where do you live in relation to that map behind you?
Okay, my home is 106 Kelly Lane, right here. And this is the subject property. And, uh, so that's it.
So, it's behind you?
That's what you asked.
Yeah, the property's behind them.
So, the rezoning for 121 Eagle Road, that was recommended last year by the commission, by the board, and, and May of 2023, we're here, the commission's united at six to one. The main contentions last year for denial was, this is a predominantly highly residential area. Many homes will be too close to the business, that's what was said. The tape is still there, everybody can go watch it and look at it. Some of the commissioners' main contentions were, number one, many homes, backyards back right up to that property. Number two, it's too much of a residential area for commercial operation. Number three, it's putting too many problems in these people's backyards. Number four, other similar zoning situation requests have been denied when it's so close to other residential. And I'd like to point out that none of the commissioners that denied the rezoning last year said that they would approve it if it was based upon road maintenance guarantee by the applicant. None said that. So, the Eagle Road area, 121, is mostly heavily residential. Kelly Lane has eight homes. Most is to the south of Eagle Road, almost to the right there. Then you have Hibbs Acres on the north side, many, many homes over there, I haven't bothered to count those. Then you have Eagle Road further down, maybe 50 homes, I tried to count them, I couldn't even do that. Zoom out in the county map, it's right there, we've all done it, predominantly heavy residential area. And I want to show you how close my home will be to the proposed landscaping operation. This is my home, 106 Kelly Lane. The gray, the gray area, the brown area is 121 Eagle Road. Beyond that, there's a drainage ditch. Drainage ditch beyond that. And the privacy fence required by the county ordinance will go about 10 feet into the green area, the grassy yard. From there, it's about 40 feet to my back door. My backyard will go right up to this commercial operation. There are four homes along Kelly Lane, along this drainage ditch, the backyards, they're right up there, that commercial operation. So, it's predominantly, we're gonna hear everything there. And I'd like to show you also on these photos, the homes on Eagle Road, how close they are to the proposed operation. This is the one right up on the corner at the intersection. And then there's others, and you guys can. and see. But it's a highly residential area. It's been that way. It was that way last year. And a landscaping business will be too close to a lot of homes. That's what was said last year. Commercial operations bring more daily sound and noise. Eight bordering homeowners have objected to this rezoning to keep it a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. And until you've gone to that drainage ditch and stood there and looked, or stood on my back deck and looked and see how close it is, you don't know how big and close this operation is gonna be. The planning board has approved a two acre business surrounded by tiny homes on half acre lots. It's too big. It's too close. The permitted use applied for by the applicant has changed to landscaping business. Seems kind of wide open and vague. I heard the gentleman talk about what he wants to do there. But if you Google search landscaping equipment, it could be anything from garden shears, backhoes, rakes or whatever. But it can also be dump trucks, backhoes and dozers. They could literally bring anything in there and do what they want. They could bring chipper trucks and make mulch. At last year's hearing, Mr. Shin asked for any compelling statements or reasons why the planning board had recommended approval. So, this year, I'm gonna ask, what are the compelling objections of bordering owners for denying this approval? Well, if you YouTube search landscaping business, it's not just rakes and shovels. It's things with motors. It can be. Motors make noise. So, it could be large equipment, trucks for moving, materials, soil, gravel, rocks, brick, stone, concrete. It could be all of these things. Big saws for cutting papers. That's what a landscaping business can be. Beer motors, more sounds, louder sounds daily. A landscaping business, 40 feet from our back doors, 40 zones here are gonna run along that drainage ditch, 40 feet to that. So, and that's the risk. There's gonna be sounds, louder sounds, more sounds, more often. That's the risk for us. There's no guarantee against that for these bordering owners. We can only guarantee that by denying this rezoning. Surrounding owners want to keep a peaceful, quiet neighborhood. Last year, commissioners denied the rezoning. Mr. Chadwick said, it's a highly residential area. It's a little too much of a residential area for a commercial operation. It's putting too many problems in these people's backyards. Mr. Mansfield spoke of similar zoning situation requests that was denied where it's so close to other residential that he didn't know that we should be switching that piece to commercial. Mr. Chadwick, Mr. Wheatley agreed. So, other similar requests have been denied because it's so close to residential homes. Mr. Mansfield agreed. There were similar situation business properties up and down Hibbs Road, but they were done years ago before there were as many residents as there are today. So, he could want to see why those decisions were made back then. But right now, he is struggling with all those backyards backing up to that property and the ones across the street in Hibbs Acres. It would be obtrusive. All those backyards backing up to those homes. These contentions the commissioners had last year haven't changed. But they weren't mentioned at the planning board hearing in the notes that I have. I got a copy of the temporary notes. Of course, we all saw last year also the, you make a point, the commissioners questioned dumping the concrete and materials seen on the satellite photos and stuff like that. Mr. Clark Wheatley said, it sounds like it could be a commercial activity to him. Mr. Mansfield said, it could be a potential commercial operation. I replied, well, if they're doing something on residential land now, they're not supposed to be doing. If it's own commercial business, are they gonna violate that zoning too? Well, we don't know. Don't know the answer to that question. Mr. Mansfield said, another big concern is that they don't have access to Hibbs Road. Express concern about adding dump trucks and other commercial traffic onto Eagle Road. Even if that property had direct access to Hibbs Road, it's still too big and too close to a lot of homes. None of the six commissioners that denied it last year said they would approve it if the applicant would guarantee road maintenance at the intersection of Eagle Road. The tape is there. Everybody can look at it. There was not a conditional statement made that this zoning would be approved. But that's why we're here today. That's the comeback. So, the reasons why commissioners voted against the rezoning last year haven't changed. But I don't think the planning board cares about those reasons because I did obtain unofficial notes from the planning board meeting, May 13th. Were any of you commissioners at the meeting by any chance? I'm just trying to clarify because it says in the notes commissioners. So, it wasn't you guys. But from the notes, bordering homeowners' objections didn't get much attention at that meeting. In the notes, it was just mentioned that some folks were worried about property values, increased vehicular traffic, residential area. That's it. Five seconds spent on owners' objections. Do you guys get copies of the owners' objections?
We have copies of what?
The owners' objections, surrounding property owners' objections. They send out 25. They got eight back and objected. Do you guys get copies of what people say?
Yes.
Excellent. But none were stated at the commissioners' hearing last year. None are stated this year. And here's my point. It appears that bordering homeowners' objections are barely mentioned, certainly not discussed, or given any concern at planning board hearings. They weren't mentioned at the end. If surrounding property owner's statements don't really matter, I mean, why send them out?
Well, you didn't get a majority to even reply that they're against it.
We had eight, we had eight of 25. That's 32 percent, which I'm gonna go with.
Thirty-two percent's not a majority, is it?
That's not. But if the people that are 200 feet away don't care, that's one thing. But we're talking about bordering owners. And the two that said it was okay, maybe they're the people that own the property. I'm, I'm not sure. These are just data and statistics. But from the planning board hearing this year, 25 surrounding property owners were notified. There were eight objections. That's 32 percent objections. And that's two more objections than last year. But they're not discussed at the planning board hearing. The six commissioners approved it and sent it to you guys. But objections aren't discussed there. It's just five seconds. That's all it came down to. So, it appears that owners' objections are barely mentioned. And we're the ones that really, like, we're bordering owners. We're not surrounding. We're not 200 feet away. Our backyards are 40, 40 feet. That's what it's gonna be. The, homeowner's objections are barely mentioned, certainly not discussed, or given any concern at planning board meetings. I think county commissioners see a problem for bordering homeowners. They did it, they did last year. And with regard to the Eagle Road intersection promised by the applicant, most people living down Eagle Road are probably driving through Hibbs Acres, going down James and crossing through Paul now because it's paved, it's state maintained, if they have a problem with the gravel entrance. State maintained is really the only solution for Eagle Road. The applicant and the planning board are promoting this rezoning for two reasons. About some limited improvement at Eagle Road intersection and because there's two commercial zones nearby, zoned over 30 years ago. But what about the people? What about the bordering homeowners whose backyards will go right up to this commercial operation and hear everything every day? And we don't know what that's gonna be. It could be motors. Maybe it's gonna be rakes and shovels. We don't know. But, so we, the only way we can guarantee peace and quiet is to deny the rezoning. So, the people, we want to keep a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. And the 15 foot grass buffer, 10 foot screen called for by the county ordinance when placed in a commercial zone next to a residential, Mr. Mansfield said last year, it's not that great. He even chuckled while he said it. So, he's right. It's not gonna block out whatever comes from over there. The daily commercial operation, sounds and traffic, landscaping equipment, any trucks going on. I've seen the equipment they have. It's over there where I see it right out of my kitchen window all day long. I know what the kind of stuff they have. It's stuck with motors. Things have to be moved, moving equipment, motors making noise, testing equipment, delivery of supplies. We don't know what's gonna go on moving supplies. The gentleman said what he was gonna do. We have no guarantee.
Mr. Tolson, do you have any new points?
Yes.
Okay. Can you get to those?
I'm sorry.
You're repeating the same things over and over. Can you get?
Yes, I attempted to repeat them over. I'm sorry.
Well, then if so, we'd like to move on.
Yeah, I'm trying not to get bogged down.
Your pass bomb down.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. All right. I'm gonna bog down some more. Sorry. But this is my time. I reclaim my time. But the new commercial business will place a commercial sign right next to Mr. and Mrs. Lewis's front yard on Hibbs Road. And I swore they will see every day. After they have worked so hard, spent a lot of money for 19 years, to have a nice looking place, what does that do to your resale value? Many of us have worked hard, spent our money, blood, sweat and tears to invest, have a nice place here. Why to have it marred by any possible sounds can come from a commercial operation next door? We have commercial operations on two sides of us. We don't want another one smack dab in the middle of a residential area next to us. However, the commissioners of planning board feel, we voted to place this commercial business right next to your house.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you have any other commercial interest on either side of you? Do you have any other commercial businesses?
There's the VFW over there. There's the, there's the VFW and there's at the southeast right up there.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, how far, how far are they from your house?
Well, from Mr. Ben's house and Lewis's house, it's right across the street probably. I don't know. You asked me for exact measure. I can't give it to you.
Well, you, you were real exact with the 40 feet and that kind of stuff. Did you give any estimation?
From here to where that's gonna be.
Okay.
That, no problem. That's all along the drainage ditch.
Ray, can you move the screen to the proposed site plan?
Sir, you're in the red shirt. I'm not trying to be rude. I just don't remember your name. When you, when you bought this property, when you and your family bought this property, was it zone residential when you bought it?
Yes, sir.
It was?
Yes, sir.
And it, and it will not perk. So, what you, what you want to put your commercial, as you, as you spoke, that's what you want to do?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, sir, do you have any recommendations if, if he gets, if he's denied, what, what he could do with his property besides pay taxes on it?
I'll buy it.
You'll buy it?
Yeah. All right. Mr. Robert will buy it. We'll both buy it. In fact, we said we should've bought that property back when we weren't thinking correctly. We didn't know why it's gonna come along. So, a big commercial sign placed right next to the Lewis's front yard, okay? That's what's gonna happen when you vote that for yourself. So, eight bordering homeowners, 30 percent object. And you say, I'm sorry, Mr. Mansfield, that's not much. But those are the people that live right next door. And so, but even if that property had direct access to Hibbs Road, it's still too big and too close to a lot of homes, a lot of tiny homes with half acre lots. It's a two acre, it's gonna be a two acre monster. Whatever they do, we have no guarantee. And that's the risk. So, the only guarantee we have is to deny this rezoning. I'll ask the commissioners, when you raise your hand, yes or no, vote if it's your own house, your own backyard, your mother's backyard, as if you're putting this commercial operation next to you. And there's gonna be a big commercial sign for the business right at the corner of your front yard you get to look at, like Mr. and Ms. Lewis will have. We hope you're gonna honor the objections of the bordering owners that don't want this business placed right next to their house and deny this rezoning. And the reasons you voted against the rezoning last year haven't changed. It's too big. It's too close. Who's been to the drainage ditch in my backyard and looked? If you're standing there looking in my back deck, it's really close. So, I'm gonna ask all that objected this rezoning to raise their hand. So, I've got some people here from the neighborhood.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Is anybody has any contentions? Is anything I said wrong? Faults?
Let me handle that part. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Thank you for, for coming up. We appreciate that.
I have a question for Gene, would you?
All right. And, 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 excuse me for just one second, but the commissioner has a question for Gene.
Where is the drainage ditch? Would the drainage ditch that borders his property, then there would be the 25 foot buffer on the other side of drainage ditch?
So, the drainage ditch would be between the landscaping business and, the buffer would be between the landscaping business and the drainage ditch.
It shows an existing ditch on there.
Do we have a good picture of that?
Yeah, it's in your right on your packet. It's the same picture right there. That's what I was asking for earlier.
All right. Blow that up a little bit.
How many feet are we talking by, Gene?
Where's the drainage ditch? Can you point to the drainage ditch?
Yeah, do that.
Existing ditch.
Right here. Existing ditch.
Okay.
Okay, that's an existing ditch, but he doesn't have to use that ditch. He can move it over to the landscaping, right?
What's the other dotted line in between that line and, we're getting too many lines on there now. The line that kind of runs off.
For point of clarification, on, on the, the south side of the 25 foot grass buffer is the actual property line, correct?
See, yes, sir. This is shown as the property.
And then the ditch that you showed is that the, the grass buffer is 15 feet, the 10 foot screening. So, I mean, you, you're, you're, from right there, it's almost 25 feet to the, the ditch, correct?
Right. So, there's 25 feet right there, 10 and 15.
Right.
And then there's the ditch right here.
So, from Mr. Tolson's property, that building is probably 60 feet away.
I think that's reasonable.
And now, it may be 40 feet from that corner property to Mr. Austin's property. Maybe even lo, lo, longer. I mean, I don't have a scale right now to measure it, but, so, okay, so that's.
Answer your question.
Is that what you were asking, Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, I'm asking, you know, you got the drainage ditch and then you also have the 25 foot buffer. So, you could possibly have a 40 foot buffer there.
Right. So, the dash line is the ditch.
You'd have a 65 foot buffer. If you got 40 feet, you got 25, you got a 65 feet.
It could, but it tapers down as it gets to the back of the property, looks like the thing.
Is a 10 foot buffer screening normal?
Yes.
It is 10 foot?
Yes.
Ray, can you flip to the, the slide right behind that one?
I'll show you.
The ne, the next slide in the back. Yep. No, go, come back again.
Go back.
Go back, right there.
Right there. So, that, that property right there, Gene, the B1, the southeast, didn't we do a rezoning request and, and add additional commercial property to that property?
We did.
Within the last 18 months or 24 months? I mean, my, my memory's not as good as it used to be.
Right.
And that's right across the street from what we're talking about now, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Subject property.
What is that? What is that B1 right there?
Oh, that's that fabrication where they were doing the, all the sandblasting and things like that.
Well, how, how, excuse me, how close is that B1 to this gentleman's house that he's?
He's at 105.
He's at 105?
106, right? Mr. Tolson?
106.
106, yes, sir.
And this was, well, let's let the, let's let her speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Can you just state your name and address, please?
I'm Kay Sasha Lewis, 102 Kelly Lane.
102 Kelly Lane.
That's me right here.
Okay.
My biggest thing is, I mean, this property across the street was already commercial. It was a cabinet company or something. I came to that hearing. I mean, we did oppose it, but they said it wasn't gonna be a lot going on over there. My house shakes. There's dump trucks. I mean, we've had, them have trucks over there running overnight. I mean, it is constant noise at our house. And that's what's freaking us out about having another business right behind our house. I mean, we're surrounded. Here and here.
All right. Well, thank you and appreciate it. And if there's someone else that wanted to speak? Is there someone else that wants to?
Do I need to go with everyone?
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, sorry. Can you just state your name and address, please, ma'am?
My name is Gaynel Coe. I live at 103 Kelly Lane, which is opposite of Mr. Tolson. And I agree with everything they say. We just want a peaceful and quiet neighborhood with what we've got already. I've got the VFW in back of me. And I'm concerned about the value of our property if we have another business come in. You know, like, we're gonna be surrounded on all three sides. So, that's basically all I want to say.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll just ask him if you want to sell him the property.
Unfortunately, no. I do kinda wanna address that point a little bit though because, well, I mean, I, I definitely hear what you guys are saying, that the residents who live on Kelly Lane and stuff. I mean, I, I probably wouldn't love the idea of another business coming in next to my house. Unfortunately, though, I mean, there's really nowhere else for us to go, really. I mean, you guys live outside of town limits where, where you, if you lived in town limits, then it's like, that makes a little more sense. You're trying to live in a very quiet neighborhood. And I- to live in a very quiet neighborhood. And I, but when y'all bought these lots outside of town limits, you know, outside of New Park, outside of Morehead, y'all are living on, you know, county limits. I just don't see what y'all were expecting to be done with this big acres right here when there was nothing there. I mean, something was gonna come along eventually. And I, I mean, it just, it kinda, I hate to say it, but it's like, something was gonna happen there eventually. Maybe if y'all wanted to live somewhere quiet, away from everybody, I, I would have probably chosen to live somewhere further out, away from, you know, I mean, this is in between two highways. Just up here, a couple miles north is Highway seventy. And then on the other end, a couple miles, uh, that'd be south is, uh, Highway twenty-four. So I mean, there's a lot of traffic there already, just cars coming up and down all the time. And I think it's only gonna continue to get worse. So, I mean, I hate to say it, but maybe a relocation wouldn't be the worst idea. I'm sure property values have gone up a lot since, you know, these houses were purchased here. I would see them selling for a lot nowadays. Uh, that's just kind of what I was thinking, you know? I may be right or wrong. I don't know, but that's kinda what I'm thinking.
I liked to make a move.
But I was twenty years old, so that's what I could afford.
I got a question.
Hold on one second.
Was it for me? Who's it for?
Uh, it's for, uh, Mr. Rios.
Okay, no, go ahead.
Would you be open to a larger buffer to try to mitigate some of the concerns about the noise or higher or wider? Or is there any way we can meet in the middle anywhere?
Um, I'd have, I mean, that's something I hadn't, I wasn't really prepared to speak on exactly, 'cause, uh, I didn't think that would come up. Um, I wish I had my dad and my partner here so we could discuss it before I would agree to something like that. Um, I would really rather not, 'cause that is already a pretty big buffer, and we have kind of trouble trying to fit our building where we wanted it there. Um, I mean, if the homeowners on Kelly put up a, you know, a privacy fence or something, that would, that would clear up a lot of their, you know, eyesore and stuff like that. They probably just got used to the fact that it was just green screened there and, and they, most of them don't have a fence. Um, I think, you know, if they put up a privacy fence on the end of their lot, that would, you know, that would...
Just noticing you got your building kinda in the middle or the, uh, the property that's really closer to their property, or if you flipped it around and had your building, I don't know what direction that is, 'cause, uh, it's Newport. But I would say, I'm gonna say toward the back of the property where you currently own that, and that would maybe mitigate some of the noise. You know, what are you using that property for? That's still zone residential, and you said it would perk, so I don't...
Yeah, at least we'll be, we'll, we'll do houses there, um, either rent them or sell them eventually in the future, maybe have some family move in, but, uh, just residential, three bedroom.
If you put a building against that property line to get it further away from their property line.
Um, I guess we could potentially be open to that. Um, it's just, I hate the idea of the buffering, 'cause every square feet makes a difference for our, you know, moving our trucks and stuff around, so.
I understand that very well.
But, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be completely opposed to that. I guess, like, we could maybe hear from, from the other Kelly Lane residents and see what they think. I mean, if, if it comes down to that, I could, I could see that being something we work out.
I just wanted to let the Commissioners know that if it's a conditional use zoning, we can't change the conditions and vote on it right now. It would have to have written approval of the owners, the actual deed owners of the property, before it comes to the Commissioners. So if the option is to change the condition, then this is gonna need to be tabled or taken off the agenda and voted on at a future meeting.
Okay.
If it comes down to that, does that mean we have to wait the six months again to reapply and come, or get everybody back together?
No, but you can't do a conditional use unless the owners actually agree in writing. The Commissioners have to have agreement in writing before they can, they can vote on that.
So that would also require us for not, us not to really vote on it tonight and leave it, leave it up to them to make that judgment call, so it doesn't have to wait. And got one more?
We only have thirty days of the next year.
Something occurred to me that I just thought I would mention. Do you need me to come up there? No, you're okay. Go ahead. You're a nice guy. I wish you much success. Now, when you said that property wouldn't perk and you couldn't put a house there, okay, when the people came to drill a well, the well company actually came and used our hose and our water, 'cause they needed it to drill a well. What does that have to do with not perking? So you can drill a well? Yeah. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing. It's totally the opposite of, of the well, um, because you're, you're on a septic system out there, not city, or not a, not a, um, septic or a sewer system. Okay, so...
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, are there, are there any more questions for anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Got a hand up back there.
Oh, okay, we got one more hand up. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, well, I, I, I really need you to come forward so we can get you in the... You'll just state your name and address, please, sir?
My name's Robert Holt. I live at 107 Kelly Lane. My concerns are the tax structure. Does this change our tax structure? And does this increase, increase our insurance and the quality of living in the, uh, in, in my home? These are the questions I have.
I can't answer those questions. Um, and I would imagine they probably wouldn't, but I can't answer those questions. All right?
Make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, a first and a second. All those in favor going out of public hearing, please raise your right hand. All right? And any other discussion?
Madam Attorney, can you explain that to me again? So if there's a six oh approval for a conditional zoning with these conditions attached, and there's a motion made tonight to approve the conditional rezoning, are you saying that that can't be done?
No, it can be done based on the arrangement that the planning department has brought forward and that has gone through.
So if there are no changes?
The planning, yes.
There could be a motion tonight that could pass?
If there's no change to it and you want to pass it tonight on the way that it's come through on the six oh approval, you can do that right now.
Okay.
I was interjecting merely to say, if the board, as an alternative, was looking at changing the buffer or changing anything about the site plan that's already been looked at as part of that approval, that would need to go back to staff, and they'd have to work with the owner, because conditional use is different. You have to actually have the owner of record agree to it in writing. And they've already agreed to it in writing. It's actually on the agenda forum. It's on their application that way, and they signed it. So it, the way it's coming to you tonight with that site plan, the owners have already agreed to it in writing.
The owners have already agreed to it in writing?
Yes, sir. And that's what's legally required.
So you, any requirements that were changed would have to go back?
Yes, sir.
And be approved by the neighbors as well?
Well, it would have, it would probably need to be heard again at the planning board so the neighbors could, could give their input, but that's not absolutely necessary. It could go back to a staff level.
Any other comments from Commissioners?
I'll make a comment. If he'd be willing to sweep, uh, flip the site plan to put the building and the noise against his property line, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But the way he's got it drawn here, being close to their property, I'm gonna have to vote the same way I did last time. If he would do something to mitigate, uh, the neighborhood along with the twenty-five foot buffer, I was trying to find a happy medium there, but, you know, he may have to go, come back at the next meeting according to our attorney. But I was trying to make everybody happy, and I like to see young people working and doing business. So I'm trying to find a way to get you where you need to be without hurting them. That'd be my two cents.
So you're saying flip it to put the stor, the equipment storage area closer to Hibbs Road and the building?
Or Eagle Road and have the building over wherever the noise is gonna be created, if he's gonna be working on his equipment, stuff like that, have it against his property line, which is further down Eagle Road, to try to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
Try to make it make sense, I guess.
I mean, if we slide this over a little bit, I mean, that's really only gonna add a couple extra feet. And most of our noise is gonna be right around here anyways, which is still, you know, further so you could get, if we flip things around, I mean, it's, it's not really, but I just wanted to, to kinda point that out, how, uh, you know, we're not too far from this side of the property line as it is, and the existing culvert is over here, which is kinda why we wanted to keep it closer to this culvert, uh, try to add a new one over here. And, uh, most of the noise would probably be right here and, you know, cars being parked up there, which is kinda what we would think it would be further away from the Kelly Lane residence as is.
So, Gene, on a typical commercial property, you can, you can basically build lot line to lot line, right?
Depending on which commercial district you can, sort of generally smaller for this one.
Um, so he's, he's provided plus some what would be a typical setback. He's...
Yes.
Well, my thoughts are, I mean, I, I, I understand the concerns of the, of the residents around, but I still feel like that that particular piece of property is, uh, more valuable with a, with a business type classification. Um, I think that's a pretty responsible layout, what he's got. Uh, and, and with the barriers that are, or the, uh, boundaries that have been proposed, um, I, I'm still with, uh, with approving the, the rezoning. I'll make that my motion.
Did the, the planning board recommended approval of this the last time too, correct?
Yes, sir, they did.
So they've looked at it once and made an motion, I mean, sent it up as a recommendation for us to approve it. They've relooked at it again now. This time it's a conditional use. Last time it wasn't a conditional use. They're agreeing to leave the second parcel as residential and only making that be the commercial piece, and added the buffers in addition and...
And the road maintenance.
And the road maintenance for the totality of their, that particular lot that they're changing.
Yes, sir.
And we have commercial property on two sides also, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's across the road, then the VFW, and then there's another one up the road. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Motion on the floor.
I'll second, but she has the right.
All right, so we've got a first and a second. Um, please restate your motion, just so she has that.
So my motion is to approve the request to rezone this property per the sketch that's been provided, the conditions that are applied.
All right, and we have a second on that. Um, are we ready for a vote? No more questions? I'm good?
I, uh, I think the property owner's really gone the extra mile in trying to satisfy the desires of the residents in the area. I sympathize with the eight people that were opposed to it. But, yeah, I'm a landscaper myself, and I've been around a lot of landscape businesses, and they tend to be very quiet, not, uh, do you have dump trucks and all kinds of heavy equipment, or are you, we're looking at?
Yes, sir, we do have some dump trucks.
Where are you currently located?
Um, we just do it out of our own backyard.
Okay.
So we have about an acre lot that, well, my parents have...
In a residential area?
And we just do it out back there. Luckily, we haven't ran into any issues with neighbors or anything like that there, so. Yeah, there's not really, we've been looking for a long time. We've been doing business in Carter County for probably about thirty, I don't know, twenty-some years. Um, we might have been looking a lot of different places somewhere we can put business where it's ideal location because we're so spread out. We sometimes drop in Bothert, sometimes we drop in Emerald Isle, and, uh, there's just nowhere else really for us to go that will be outside of town limits, but still in a decent area of Carter County where we can, you know, conduct our business in a...
On that, a ten-foot vegetative buffer? Are you gonna be using relatively large plants? You can put all one gallon material in there.
Well, I believe the ordinance is what they...
Yeah, let's, let's get a verification.
Yeah, so the ordinance specifies it's a type one and type two planting, ones of low, low shrub, and the others is three foot rough. So at the time of planting, it has to be, I think, five within a year.
What, it's a two-tiered planting?
Yes, sir, so two-tiered.
Low ones, then tall ones behind it?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? We got a first and a second. A second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. All right, we have one opposed. Is that correct? Two, two. All right, that, that passes. Um, uh, and, um, we're gonna need to, you're, you're gonna, just so everyone understands this process, this still goes through, you verify all these things after they're done, and you're, you're, you're permitting process.
We actually record the permit, yes, sir, and make sure that it's developed according to...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to state a statement of consistency and reasonableness that the Commissioners found in the term of case number two zero two four dash zero 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 three zero is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Kamius plan, because along Hibbs Road, this corridor there, there've been other consistent businesses done in the past, but also within the last several years, and noted in the objection by one of the homeowners, the property he referenced that we did turn down, we came back and approved those properties, except for one or two as commercial also. Uh, this is reasonable in the public interest, because this property would not have any much tax value if something, we're not done with it due to the fact that it does not perk. And that is my motion.
All right. All those in favor, please raise, or I need a second on that.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And our next item is number eight. It's a public hearing on the proposed text amendment to the Carter County Zouting Ordinance Section one one zero two and two zero zero three. Mr. Foxworth?
I got an easy one for you now.
All right.
So update to one sixty D. This literally, um, the, the state, um, came back and said that our parking spaces can be a maximum of nine feet wide. Currently, our ordinance calls for ten feet wide. That's the change.
All right, the state has come down on us because our parking spaces are too wide.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, remember that down the road.
Yes, sir.
What are the ones striped in the red on parking lot?
Ten feet wide. I believe they're ten feet wide, yes, sir.
So we still have a foot extra versus what was required by the state?
Yes, sir.
We're going above and beyond.
We're trapped. We like nice, comfortable parking spots.
Motion to go in public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're now in public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on our, our wide parking spaces?
It's a reduction in our ordinance.
Motion to go in public hearing.
It is a reduction.
All right, um, no one here to speak on that subject, so can I get a motion to go out of public hearing?
So move. I got third.
We got, we got thirds and fours.
Yeah.
All those in favor to go out of public hearing, please raise your right hand. All right, we're now out of public hearing.
This only pertains to new construction, correct?
Correct.
So we don't have to go back and repaint all the parking lots?
No, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution to miss, amend Sections eleven oh two and two thousand and three of the Carter County Zouting Ordinance.
Second.
You got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the motion of the state to plan consistency due to the fact that the state has proposed this change.
Second.
All right, we're now on item number nine.
Yeah, we need a second.
I need a first and a second. I mean, you got a first and a second.
Second.
On consistency. Um, first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Item number nine, the big fun part of the night, to approve the budget.
Hmm.
All right, um, wanna thank our staff for putting together this budget proposal, and I wanna ask the Commissioners if they have any comments or would like to make any suggestions.
I think they've done a fine job.
Absolutely.
As always.
No questions, comments?
No questions or comments? All right, well, obviously, we had a couple items that we need to, uh, to make some changes on.
I mean, if nobody has any comments... Actually, if nobody has any comments or any uh questions, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the manager's proposed budget with the exception of they recommended nine hundred thousand dollars in operating for the uh public schools. I'd like to increase that amount to one point five million um and go with the recommended with the capital. And also increase the amount for the Humane Society for their general operating by twenty-five thousand dollars. And note that we are already spending a good amount of money on capital, but the cap county is not appropriating it then, but we're taking care of the repairs and the up upfit on some of the items out there.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question, please. How how much on on the school budget with the one point five million? How much will we will we be taking from the recommended budget from the school?
Um, you're asking me.
I am asking you.
And I think it was.
The recommended budget was nine hu- a nine hundred thousand dollar increase.
The recommended is nine hundred to a total of one point five, but the original request for operating was three point two, is that right?
Sounds right.
Am I?
A lot. Do you have a breakdown of that?
Three point, three point four million was their request.
And and what, and that three point four million, what what would we be cutting out of that uh?
I um.
Ms. Burns, what would we be cutting out of that?
Uh, we just recommended the operating. I mean, we give them an operating number and, you know, they really decide how they spend their funds. We don't dictate what they have to spend it on or how they spend it or how they responsibly manage it.
They did provide a list the other day, uh like some of it was esters positions that won't go away. They wanted to keep four or five of those. And then we had like an engineer person, which we have uh Mr. Johnson now that we could share with them at no cost to them, right?
Right.
That's a hundred and some thousand dollar extra to the one point five. And what else were some of the items? Do you have that list marked that you asked for?
Everybody has it, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody had it.
We gave it, they gave it to us the last meeting. It was a good list.
I don't have it in front of me, so. There's a list of items.
Do you recall what that was, Richie? Uh they spelled out each position by position, so many hundred thousand for the esters. So much for each.
Like two point five state block funded and then like nine hundred thousand was for new items.
Two, two point nine state block funded. And um the new items were nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
And that's just on the operating side?
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
I'd like to say something, you know, about the uh school budget, the. You know, when when uh we handled the sheriff's situation, we were very uh. We did, we went along and we gave them several raises and did several other things and we invested close to, uh what's gonna be close to five billion dollars on on property to uh speculate on building certain things out there on that property. And the perception of a lot of people and myself is, you know, that we're putting uh we're putting the inmates and the sheriff's office in front of the schools and the children. And I ha- I have a problem with that because I I don't I don't think that's the way that things should be done. I think that our children and our schools should come first. And I've thought about this a whole lot and uh one of the ways that we could actually meet and help the school system get to where they need to be and where they want to be, where they can operate fully would be to go to our fund balance and take that money from the fund balance and give it to the schools. With reevaluation coming up, there's going to be a large influx and increase in the revenues that comes in and we could certainly at that point in time come back and refund that money back to the uh fund balance. And uh I don't know how much traction that's gonna get, but to me, that would be the to my way of thinking, that would be the thing to do rather than rather than cut them and uh I'd just like to see us do that. And we could take that money and very easily do that and uh be no harm, no foul to anyone. And uh I would like to recommend to all of us that we do that.
Or are we actually cutting them or are we just reducing the increased amount they wanted?
You can call them whatever you want. I call it cut and reducing whatever. I I think I think the superintendent was uh uh and his assistant were very clear and open and fair in their request and I thought they did a very good job of presenting that. And I've looked through it and uh I don't see any waste, any hiking trails, anything in there at all. I I think those things that he asked for, I think they're important and I think they're necessary. And I think I think that we need to put our kids first and like I said, that fund balance we have we'll be able to repay that fund balance when the reevaluation is completed easily, in my opinion.
All right, um any other comments?
I mean, I would say we ranked in the top ten percent of the state based upon the percentage of money we give to education um in the state. And so I think we already put our children first and I think if you compare the schools' budget to the sheriff's budget, there's not even any comparison to which one we put first. And I mean, we've averaged giving over a billion dollars a year to the schools every year over the last ten years. And I mean, it's whether you want to raise taxes or not, if that's what you're proposing, then we can talk about that, but I mean, the the revow's not gonna do anything. If you, if the revow, the values go up, the rate's supposed to go down revenue neutral. If you don't go revenue neutral, you raise taxes. That's an equation.
And I I I want to just say that um again, facts are facts. We have raised the budget for the school board at least a million dollars per year, um especially over the last eleven years, plus increases that we have made for the teachers. Um uh we just, it it just comes, and I and I said it the last meeting, it just comes down to we gotta tighten up. I mean, it 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 it, I mean, it's it's obvious we gotta tighten up. I don't think we can bank everything on the revow. And if that is a discussion for next year, when you actually know you got the money in the bank, um right now, we don't know that yet.
Do you, how much fund balance are we appropriating in this budget year? So we're already, we're already appropriating five point five million fund balance to balance our budget.
Yes, sir.
So if we give any more, now is that including the the one point five motion or is that with the nine hundred thousand?
That's with the nine hundred thousand. The six hundred thousand.
And we've we've got some interest earning, interest earning calculations, we'll take an offset part of it, but it would still be an additional hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance in addition to that.
No, it act, um I looked at investment earnings today, it said the whole six hundred that was in the motion would would cover.
But it would, but it would be five point, how many million again?
Five and a half.
Five and a half million in fund balance.
Yes, sir.
With with all due respect to everyone, uh there's not one item, labor, transportation, equipment, anything, everything is doubled, tripled, summed, quadrupled in prices. And uh I I it it you you can't operate with the same amount of money as you did two, three, or four years ago. You've got, you've got to change with the times, and the times have certainly changed. And uh it's obvious when you go to the grocery store, it's obvious when you go to the gas pump, it's obvious wherever you go. And uh it's, I I think you, I think that uh that we should in, we should go along and do what the superintendent has asked to do. I think he's uh very well-intended. I think he stated his thing very much. And uh I'd like to see us do that.
All right, is there anybody that's got a second to that motion? Is there a way we can meet in the middle somewhere?
I think you got a motion on the floor previously.
We have a motion on the floor already, so um I think we should uh go go with that one first, correct?
Sounds like it.
All right, the first motion, um the first motion was stated to give um the schools a total of one point five billion dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Humane Society.
That's one point five in additional operating.
One point five in additional operating.
For a total of what? Thirty? Thirty-one? Thirty-one? The Humane Society was also. Increase above. That you can.
Yeah, the current expense goes to twenty-eight million, five hundred thirty thousand, right, and six hundred thousand for charter schools.
So twenty-eight point five three million plus six hundred thousand for charter schools, which is factored into that also. That's pass through. They don't get that, right? That's just a. We had to account for it. But twenty-eight and a half million on the operating side and how many million on the capital? The capital is stayed the same.
Stayed the same as requested.
Two point, two point one. Two point one million? Two million.
Recommended.
Two million. So we're gonna leave that alone at the two million. And so they're asking for thirty million and we're gonna allocate twenty-eight and a half million. Twenty-eight point five three.
Twenty-eight point five or twenty-eight five point plus six hundred?
Was the six hundred.
It's a pastor, okay, sorry, that's all right, okay, all right. All right, that's our first motion and second. All those in favor?
No, there was no second.
Not been seconded.
It wasn't?
No second.
Okay, all right, we got a first and a second. On the first motion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and those opposed, we have one. All right, that passes.
So now we would need a motion to adopt the county budget ordinance with those recommended changes.
All right, I need a, I need a motion and a second.
Mark. Make a motion to approve the county budget as amended.
It's like a budget ordinance.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and that's unanimous.
And that motion was to approve the county budget ordinance. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, as amended.
Who was the second?
Mr. Shin.
All right, our next, our next item is the uh the manager's report. Tommy Burns, I hope your week was better than it was for the last meeting.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Um early last week, I had the opportunity to attend the county advocacy days in, at the legislature in Raleigh. And education funding was a big topic of discussion uh at the Tuesday night session. Um many of the counties um had the same challenges that we do with regards to how to fund education. We get asked a lot of the questions about how are y'all able to provide so much? You know, some counties take what the state allot allot and that's it. And I, you know, I'll just tell them that we've always had a commitment to education. Um if you look at the last ten years of budgets in this county, how the the uh operating expense has increased for the county schools. Um the commissioners a few years ago, on your own tuition, you you uh increased the local supplements uh above and beyond what the superintendent had recommended that year. Um and so, you know, I, that was a a question that had a lot of conversation that night. Some of the other issues uh that we discussed at the county advocacy days was the legislature. Currently, there's two uh philosophical differences between the House and the Senate with regard to the short session and what budgets, budget adjustments, if any, will be made. Uh and even as late as as our meeting early last week, there was still a lot of discussions about the Senate possibly adjourning and going home, the House pushing for some spending bills, so uh I think there's, even this week, still trying to sort a lot of that out. So we'll continue to follow that and provide you updates. Um and then the last thing was just on a um I wanted to make mention that uh we would all be thinking about the family of Leroy Golden um this week. Leroy passed away and he's kept many of us high and tight through the years at the barber shop, so I wanted to mention the Golden family. They laid him to rest this week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tommy. All right, um and then our next item is commissioner appointments.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to uh appointments, I'd like to make a motion, we uh bring Ms. Sharon Griffin on as a full-time attorney.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that.
Got a first and a second. Any uh comments? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you for all you've done up to this point and we look forward to working with you. All right, now we're gonna do appointments. Um our first uh appointment board is the Carter County Aging Planning Board. Is that you, Bob?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Mr. Don Hasselbeck, reapportment to a three-year term.
All right, uh all those in favor of Mr. Don Hasselback, please raise your right hand. Is it for after this, correct? And then our next item is the Carter County Harbor Authority. Mr. Tom C. McArthur, Jr., reapportment for two years.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor of Mr. Tom C. McArthur, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Uh Bob?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to uh recommend Mr. John Carswell as the Faith Community Representative for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for a two-year term and also Kristen Patton as the nonprofit organization representative also for a two-year reapportment.
All those in favor of Mr. John Carswell and Kristen Patton, please raise your right hand. All right, and the last one is the jury commission. Only one seat available for either Jeffrey Brasfield, Brasfield or Michael Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Mr. Michael Nelson.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Michael Nelson, please raise your right hand. All right, that's unanimous. All right, and then our next item on the agenda is the uh amendment to the agenda.
So let me know.
And that is a discussion. We amended on the judgment, on the agenda for a discussion about the appointed boards. Mad Attorney, can you give us an outline of the appointments that we make to boards and give us some direction on how that process works?
So a couple of you did call me about some of the appointed boards. And there are numerous boards that the Board of Commissioners are charged with making appointments to. Many of those boards are created by the Board of Commissioners and um Chairman Barrington wanted me to share with all of you that it is um the authority and an obligation of the Board of Commissioners that you you can, just like you appoint people to boards, you can also change those appointments and rescind those appointments if in your judgment as a board and your discernment, you do not think that the best interests of Carteret County and all of its citizens are being protected. County and all of its citizens are being protected. So these boards are created by the Board of Commissioners to allow county government to run more effectively and efficiently, and if at any time you feel that that's not the case, then you can discuss that and you can make changes. There are some legal exceptions. If boards are created by statute, by the state, then you can't make those changes, and there are only a few boards like that. For example, of course, the Board of Education is elected, that's created by statute, you can't touch that board. Um, there are other boards that you can't change the actual membership of, uh, the Board of Social Services, if we had something like that. There are certain boards that actually have statutes attached to them. Other boards, though, that you have the power to create and appoint to, you also have the power to rescind. And then I would also say, if somebody is appointed to a term certain, it's best to explain why you would want to change that appointment, so that you give them that notice of why you're trying to make that change. You actually state the cause involved. Um, do you have, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right.
I'd like to, I mean, so we've had some issues in the past, and the one that's been out, out a while is the airport board. There was some talk on, a year, a year, year and a half ago, I can't remember how long ago it was, with, at that time, they were talking of removing, um, some members, and at that time, about five board members resigned. And then evidently during that process, there was somebody disgruntled during that process that called the state auditor's office and filed some type of complaint, and so we had to do an audit that cost North Carolina taxpayers a hu, almost 125,000 dollars. And I don't know what it cost the county, but it had four of our highest-paid employees for two days, um, doing stuff.
More than two days?
And for just some, a rogue board getting, I'm assuming that's where it came from, I mean, we don't know, correct?
We won't know.
But I mean, so these, these boards actually, I mean, they're supposed to be serving the interest of the county and the interest of the Board of Commissioners, correct?
Yes, they are. And we did ask the state auditor's office about what the complaint was, just so we would understand, and we were told that that was not public record.
That was not what?
That it's not public record and that they will not release that.
And the finding was?
They had no findings.
So I mean, everything was being done correctly?
Yes.
As far as the process goes. The, the, the other one, I mean, that's been a point of contention over the last several months, is the A, the ABC board, um, and prior to myself going on there, they went under contract to buy a piece of property, um, and before I could ask questions and see if that potentially backing out, they closed on the property. But my, my question to the commissioners was, was there consensus to buy the property? Did the commissioners want to buy the property out next, one block over from Enterprise Car Rental?
There was a vote taken on the board, and there was, uh, the vote was a majority vote.
There was a vote taken to, uh, for the chairman then to negotiate with the current owners, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to purchase the property.
Well, that's exactly right, and we need to negotiate the, uh, price, and we bought, we bought the, uh, property at a hundred thousand dollars under the tax rate. I thought it was a good buy. Uh, one of the complaints was, that came from, from you, was that it was too close to Newport. Uh, exactly about five, five miles, it's five miles from Newport, and it's located, it was located near one of the, one, the busiest retail outlet centers in Carteret County.
That was one of the complaints. One of my issues was the, the proximity to a, a store that we're, the board's spending nearly a million dollars to renovate, you're going closer to it. The biggest concern that, that I think was stated was the access to that lot on a major Highway 70 with no stoplight to access it from either direction, no turn-in lane to access it from either direction, and it's the busiest road in the county. Uh, I was out there this weekend, and, and just more evidence of that. Um, there was, there were several reasons, that was one of them, though you're right, that was one of them, the proximity to, uh, to the Newport store.
Well, my question isn't what that board did. Commissioner Quinn, were you in favor of relocating down to that property?
No, sir, I was not.
Commissioner Chadwick, were you?
Uh, too far to the way.
Commissioner Barrington, did you want to go out there? Commissioner Shin?
No, I did not.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I don't even recall the whole discussion, to tell you the truth.
I mean, that, that's kind of my point, is that these boards go and, and, I mean, the, pretty much other, I guess, than Commissioner Wheatley, mo, most of us worked for doing that, but purchasing that piece of property and building a building out there, well, stop, hold on first, I mean, the due diligence that was done was not done very well, because that piece of property's not in the Moorhead City city limits, and basically that cuts out Moorhead City for getting any distribution from the ABC, and the county would receive that distribution. Is that not correct? It has to be in the, wherever it's in, that's where it would go? So I mean, it would close on a piece of property where it wasn't even in the Moorhead City limits, and it's the, right now, that would take money away from Moorhead. My other big thing is, is you're leasing a building that the lease is five or six thousand dollars a month, but if you take that lot and build the building on there, you're gonna be spending 3 million dollars to do that, which would be a cost, if you could get the money at 5%, which I don't know, maybe, is, does the ABC board get preferable terms like the county does to get a better rate than, I mean, right now, seven pluses, uh, the, the general consumer rate out there?
I don't know what rate they would get, but they, they, they do better than, than the average person in the market, not as good as the county, but they, they've gotten good, fair rates.
So I use 5% just to be conservative, say they can get a better rate. That's a 20,000 dollar a month payment on 3 million dollars. I mean, and that, that money, so if that cash flow goes away, that cuts the distributions to the county and the municipalities, correct?
Mr. Brasfield, that property we just sold, and it sold for 60,000 dollars more than what we paid for it, uh, and we're talking about having only one location in there, one, one entrance into the place. A good example, and bringing you into the, your Dairy Queen, is a very, very similar situation, and, uh, that, that seems to be quite busy, and I guarantee you that the, uh, that whiskey store out by where, near the Walmart, the Staples, and Lowe's, I'm, I don't, I don't think you could really ask for a better location than that, but, but, uh...
Well, there's more commercial vacancies around that area that you're talking about right now than any other way, any other place in, in downtown Moorhead.
But there's only one whiskey store.
Not to mention, you moved, but you're moving them further away from the residents. Most of the residents live in the Moorhead City area, not out on that Highway 70 corridor by a bunch of commercial businesses, which you can't get to with the traffic light. You have to go west and turn around to come back east, and if you were to leave the store, you have to come out and go east to come back to go back west, and the current location, you can walk into the store and get your mixers or any other ice or anything else that the person was getting, and now they're gonna have to go and create traffic in addition to spots. So I mean, my, my whole point about talking about the boards is, boards go to make these decisions, and I just, sometimes I don't think the commissioners are on board with the decisions being made. I think I've just proved the point as of lies, sometimes not a good idea.
The Walmart area is the busiest retail area in Carteret County. There's more retail shoppers there at tho, at that location and the various other stores than there is in any other place in Carteret County, than any other place. And to Mr. Shin's point, it's, it's five miles from, from that location to where the Newport store is. And let me tell you about the Newport store, I was, I was on that board for seven years when I was the chairman. Mr. Shin's store, Newport, was, is, there are six liquor stores, his was number six. We spent a million dollars to renovate that store. That's not gonna change, that's not gonna change the, uh, volume of sales in that store, and the reason being is because most of the people in Havelock, most of the people in Newport that are working in Havelock, they go to the ABC store in Havelock during their lunchtime, and on the base, by doing that on the base, they avoid taxes. And, uh, we thought, if the board voted on it, the board members voted on it unanimously to buy that location, because we thought we were improving, we would be improving the liquor sales, and we would have, but, uh, it got overruled, it got sold, and it's mighty funny, if it was so bad of a location, it sold for 60,000 dollars more than what we paid for in less than about 12 or 14 months.
Well, you are correct, it's under contract, but it has not sold yet. You are not correct in that point.
Well...
I think the main, I think the main part of our discussion is, is that we appreciate the people we appoint to our boards. All boards, um, um, all boards that serve Carteret County do fine things for our county, for our county, I mean, there's no doubt about that. But even the best boards we have, we have, we have problems, we have gridlock. Um, and some of these boards, they need to be aligned. It's a hard thing to say to someone who donates their time to serve on a board, but at the same time, you have to understand, just from our conversation, we just mentioned two boards, and what we've gone through with those boards. I've served for 11 and a half years up here, uh, and we have had issues in the past with boards, and we've done different things, we've put commissioners on those boards, we've, we've tried to make changes, we've tried to make things flow like they're supposed to flow, but even a board that has a unanimous group can go in the wrong direction. And we, as commissioners, we have to make sure that we don't make a mistake. I mean, these boards, I mean, and I'm, I'm gonna bring up the hospital board. Um, the hospital board, um, runs directly from the appointments that this commission makes. We're elected officials, and we put these folks on these boards. Some of these folks have served on the boards for terms, and then gone three or four years and come back to those boards. They're great people, they've done great things, great business men and women, but this week, we had some calls to some of the commissioners, and we realized that there's a lot of things that are happening at the hospital board right now, and we just wanna make sure that we try to guide that board in the right direction. And I think it is up to us to do that. And that's, that's a discussion that we need to have tonight. It is a, um, th, there's two, there's two things most important, it says it on our sign, that the health and wellness of the people of this county, but one of the main things we have to remember is that hospital is what makes this county work. And it is, it has done amazing things, unbelievable things. Um, our school system has done amazing things, but I'd like to get into that discussion so that we can try to talk out some of the issues that we've heard this week, and, and, um, can I, can I ask someone to speak on that? Is there someone here?
Yeah, well, I'm on the hospital board, and nobody called me about any complaints, so I don't know who would be calling the other commissioners, voicing their concerns. Now, I'm, I missed the, there was a special called meeting of the hospital board last week, which I could not attend because I didn't have a caregiver for my wife at the time, and apparently it was a, a pretty fiery meeting or something like that, for people, concerned citizens calling up commissioners about changing board members. The only thing, uh, the only, only people had, that were privy to that meeting were board members, and I'm assuming it was a closed-session meeting, and whatever was said or discussed there was private and confidential, not supposed to be shared with anybody. So whether it was a closed session or not, I don't know, but if it was, there's, there's consideration for ethics, ethics violations by the people that are calling y'all. I said, I'm on the board, and nobody called me.
There's, there's two board members in the audience tonight, Mr. Jim Bailey and Mr. Jesus Taylor. Uh, I'm sure that's, that they're here for this discussion. Uh, I would, I would think, I would think, I think Mr. Taylor is the, uh, chairman of the board, are you not?
That's correct.
And, uh, uh, Mr. Bailey's been on there a couple of years, I believe, and so we've got three board member, active board members here now, and, uh, I haven't received any complaints of anything, I've heard some things that, uh, that they're having some problem with nurses, though, that most of our nurses are going to become travel nurses because of the, uh...
Money.
Because of the money, they get twice as much money, and that's become a big problem. And, uh, I understand there's a problem with the, uh, OBGYN people, that they're, uh, demanding, uh...
Money.
A lot more money, almost than, um, a million dollars, 878, 98, something like that, almost a million dollars. And it, it, it's a money thing, and I think that, from what I can understand of it, and I, I, I don't really understand all of it, because I've heard very little, but, uh, what I do understand is that all, all the problems are revolve around the, the revenue coming into the hospital. Our hospital, if you remember, uh, eight, eight or nine years ago, our hospital was in trouble, uh, and, uh, due to some changes that were made by the board members and stuff like that, it became very salvo. And, uh, now it is starting to decline in its, uh, profit, profitability, but we're still profitable, still salvo, but there, there, uh, there seems to be a difference of opinion i, as to how you solve a problem. But I don't think you should be able to go and take a few phone calls from somebody and get a little bit, a piece of information here and a piece of information there, and make a decision on whether you're gonna throw somebody on or off the board. That just doesn't make sense. No business operates like that, and I don't think we should either.
Well, I'm not sure where the conversation's gonna go, but it's funny how you switch, uh, line of thinking, when it's the school board and you want to spin the fund balance down, um, it's okay, but when it's the hospital board and you want to spin the fund balance down, it's not okay. And then you make the statement that seven or eight years ago, the hospital wasn't in good financial condition, but it was, 'cause I was on the board, and it was making almost a million dollars a mon, a month, and it has over 200 million dollars in fund balance currently right now. So I mean, I don't think those statements are accurate, but I mean, you may be right, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I, uh...
225 million, I believe.
I, I think, what, what you missed, what I said was, I think that, that, I said they were still salvo, and they're still making a profit, but I think their profit margins have decreased rather than increased.
But that's true across the country, all hospitals experience that.
That's exactly right.
But that goes along with everything you said a minute ago, that everything's gone up, and it's going up, and, yeah, we need to spin some of the fund balance that we'll pay for. That was my point that I was making, that...
You just said I was wrong when everything else was downright a mess.
I did not say you're wrong.
Let's, anyone else want to speak on this?
I'll just comment, where do you, so, talking about profitability, so where do your profits go if all your staff walks out? If you don't have any doctors, if your OB-GYNs leave, if your cardiologists leave, if, if there's nobody over there, there's going to be some pretty significant additions and upgrades to that facility, uh, but it's gonna be awful not if, if there's nobody in there to, to, to run the store. Um, that's, that's a concern to me. I mean, you have a good portion of your staff that's threatening a mutiny, uh, and, and you're not negotiating with them.
Yeah, but you can't have a staff running the hospital or dictating the terms of how the hospital's gonna be run.
We can't have, we can't, we can't have...
They work for the hospital, it's the board and the CEO.
We can't have a board in total, total control of that either, I know that, I know that, obviously it's a town center.
Well, you've got a CEO and a board.
Well, I understand that, but, um...
Can't let your staff blackmail, blackmail you into, uh, increases, you can't operate like that. If you do, there's no end to it.
I mean, I know you said there's ethics issues, and it was a closed-session meeting, but...
I'm not sure if it was.
And you, and you weren't there.
Right.
Um, but, so the majority of the board is all in favor of going in the direction it's going? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, is that, I mean, I don't know, I'm asking a question.
No, there's, there's, uh, discussions every month when we have our, our meeting about the, uh, status of the different positions within a hospital, there's OB-GYN, or the traveling nurses, or the scholarship... There's OB GYN or the traveling nurses or the scholarship nurses we're getting in or cardiology center. Or, I mean, we're doing a lot of building and construction, have done a lot of construction. So, I mean, it's just a wide ranging discussions. We get a financial report from, uh, one of the staff members. And it's a very condensed version of what's going on within the whole establishment. And we get a, you know, our, our margin for the month, whether it's seven percent or two percent, three percent. The declining margins, you know, hospitals have been in trouble since, really since twenty twenty-two. They're trying to come out from underneath the COVID experience. And then we're going right into this, this high inflationary period where, uh, it's eating up people's money, so they're demanding more wages to offset what they're losing at, at the grocery store and stuff like that. So, uh, but you can't spend your way out of a problem. You know, you, you, you've got to, uh, you really can't, we might have, yeah, we got a lot of money in the bank. But on a hospital, you, you can go through that money real fast. It could all disappear within a, you know, a year and a half, two years if it's just spent recklessly. I agree with the comment, you can't have the staff holding the hospital hostage, uh.
So I guess you're on the boards. My question is, is, is it, is, is it the, the general consensus of the board is unanimous that those positions, that's what those positions need to be? Or is it a fractured board?
Not. I think the boards pretty much, uh, works, works together in harmony. There's nobody, I don't, uh, I don't remember any hated.
That meeting earlier that you said that could be, uh,
It was last, last week, I believe, was a special closed, uh, special called board meeting.
The chairman, if, if a good,
Commissioner Manzetti, it was on June fifth. It was a special call meeting and it was closed session.
And it was a closed session.
Yes, sir.
Keep my phone.
If, if a good, we've got Mr. Jesus Taylor in here. He's, he's the chairman of the board. Could we bring him into this discussion and ask his opinion of what, what the, uh, is that proper? What the hospital, you see anything wrong with that?
That's a weird decision, though.
It's at the discretion of the board, but I would, I would defer to the chairman.
Okay. I don't think that we need to have Mr. Taylor come up and speak tonight. I think that, I think that the commissioners, uh, need to make a judgment call on what they received this week in calls. And we need to go off that. I think that's fair.
So you don't think that Mr. Taylor?
No, I don't.
Ms. Griffin, just out of curiosity, i- i- if a board that we appoint goes into closed session, is it permissible for them to share with us that information that was discussed in a closed session?
So the first thing I would say is that all public boards are subject to the same statute on closed sessions. And there are very specific legal reasons you can go into closed session and you cannot talk about things unless they fall under those specific guidelines. As for a board that's in closed session, there actually is no legal duty for the board member not to disclose anything outside of closed session unless the board members have entered into a contract amongst themselves. It's actually a First Amendment issue. You can't make somebody not talk about something outside of closed session. And it's not considered an ethics violation legally. It's bad form in some cases, depending on the reason why you are in closed session. Um, the only time you absolutely cannot disclose is if there's another statutory reason for the confidentiality. For example, um, the Healthcare Portability Act, if it's HIPAA protected, obviously you can't talk about that outside of closed session because it has a statutory reason for being confidential. Another example would be personnel records. You can't talk about personnel records except for certain items outside with anyone that's confidential. So that you could not disclose that.
Last, last month, I was asked to sign a closed session confidentiality contract. I assume the rest of the board members got the same thing. So is that binding on all the board members that they can't discuss things outside of the, uh, closed session?
You can, you're talking about the, the hospital sign that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if all of the board members voluntarily agree to give up that First Amendment right and to not disclose what goes on in closed session, then you can technically hold each other accountable. But there's, under the case law, there's not really any set of damages you maybe would go after. It's a little bit hard to enforce, but that is one instance that's been shown that you, there is an expectation for the board not to discuss what's in closed session. But again, you have to follow those prescribed reasons to be in closed session and not go beyond that scope.
Okay. Um, any other comments, um, from our board?
I mean, I receive, I receive probably some of the same phone calls you did from a couple of board members. And I tried, I went and talked to the CEO myself and kinda tried to get a handle on what's going on without, uh, trying to embarrass anyone or divulge any information, um, about the hospital business. But, you know, there's a, uh, property down in twenty-four that they have. They have, a man donated seven point seven million dollars to build a building down there.
Sold it at a reasonable price. Not, not donated, but.
Right, okay.
No, that, actually, there was one that donated.
One donated, one sold.
One donated, one sold.
I don't think we should really put any numbers out there, but we'll just.
But, you know, I mean, a man made a sizable donation or, uh, we were, you know, cardiac care is a concern. Uh, OB GYN is concerned, travel nurses. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people who aren't seeing us going very well over there and they. What are we doing tonight? We dismissing the whole board or where, where's the, where's this conversation going?
Uh, don't know yet. Trying to let everybody speak. So, um, Mr. Chadwick, any more comments on that?
I see it.
For, for, for point of clarification, though, that, that piece of property was, was donated. They sold and received the money from. The piece you're talking about is the piece they bought down there to potentially do something with.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And there have been interest earnings made on that seven, I don't know whatever the figure Mr. Chadwick said. But, um, they have been making money on that. And that was a while back. That was given for something to be done in the West and.
I feel there's ample opportunity for the hospital to expand some of its services to the western part of the county and be able to, to make a tremendous amount of money. Uh, all you gotta do is go to the medical offices in Pollockville just to see how busy they are. And a lot of our county citizens drive just that far to Pollockville in order to receive medical care there. Um, and it wouldn't be just citizens.
Yeah.
Jones County would, uh, work. Right. And so there's a, a desire to have, uh, a forward thinking board in order to take into account expansion, uh, to the western part of the county to serve our citizens and more.
But that's, that's a.
Did the audience have a comment?
Sir?
Can members of the audience comment?
I said for the chairman.
Yeah, I'd love to talk.
Sure. Go ahead, sir.
The statement you just made, I, I, I hear you. We've looked into that for the last five or six years. You really, uh, have to know a lot more than what you're talking about, saying you grew up like a fan. Make a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at it very detailed. You'll lose a lot of money.
Hmm.
And, and, I know all that comes out, it's easy to say that all these doctors out there are making money. That's not the case.
I would say there are other, there are other board members that would disagree with that statement.
Well, that's fine. I understand that. We have, we have, uh, Furman Riley went through all that through us. Paid them a hundred and thousands and that. Look there.
So, I mean, so he, he, he wanted to speak and he brought that up about profitability. How are, how are the profits distributed by the hospital?
How are they distributed?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, they put most of it down there in that fund they have to deserve. The parent hospital association recommends a certain reserve that you keep in your swipe and well there. But hospitals keep a lot of money in reserve because if something happened over there and shut the hospital down, we're talking about significant monthly output that we, we, we spend a big time.
So there are, there are no individuals that, that receive any money from the profits of the hospital? Is that correct?
No.
So, I mean, that, that is either paid out in salaries or where it goes in that, uh, uh, reserve fund that's grown from a hundred million to, Commissioner Chadwick says two hundred and twenty-five million.
He's correct.
Um, and I know things are not going well, but, I mean, it, it's like Commissioner Franksen said. I, I mean, our mission statement talks about the health and safety, the quality of life of individuals. The gentleman donated property to put down there. We have a lot, there are not many, there are not many areas of the hospital. There's not a ton of profit centers in the hospital. I mean, a lot of the places lose money to begin with, correct?
Yes. We went, we went from the million dollars a month down to two hundred thousand. Started with COVID. And this is because of the cost of drugs and so on. There's been a lot of money wasted over there. The Jones Foundation, what you're talking about, money, they gave about several million dollars to the foundation. They, they control that. The, the land is not made for anything, for any clinic, any N S production, that's why. The land is beautiful.
Oh, I, I'm aware. I, I'm just asking you these questions for clarification based upon statements that have been made up here. So everybody kind of understands that it's not mistakes.
I can tell you, I can tell you that most of the people on that board try to do what's best for the hospital in this county. I can tell you that. Now, there may be some people who want to do the best for them, I know. Or somebody that they know, but I can tell you, I, I know, I know them all. I don't have, I mean, I don't care. I'm pretty sure I'm going, but that's fine. I mean, I, I'm making all that. I'm, I'm being good, I don't care. But I, what I've always done, and I've met a lot of people that are there, because I question. And the staff are not gonna tell me when we're gonna build clinics without having justification. And, and they're gonna show me what that's gonna pay for. So if you can't show me that, I'm not gonna agree to it. And that's what goes on. Not particularly this staff we have and have in the previous. These, these are situations you're talking about here. I hear a lot of things on here at night that are really not right. I mean, I, I got a point of view and I understand that. But if you haven't been in those meetings over there and you just talked to two or three commissioners or board members there, you're, you're making a major mistake, I can tell you. And, and that's fine with me. I, I, I leave here tonight. I, I see it clear. I know, I know that I've learned everything out of the, I, I went over there to question what goes on. That's one of my jobs. I look at that and that. And if you want me to go over there and lay down and roll over and let them spin whatever they want to into a biggie, that's not gonna happen to me. That's mine concern. I just work like this. My hospital, it's me getting out there. I'm being good. Tonight, no problem.
I will say that Mr. Taylor is a good guardian of the, the money that the hospital has in, uh, the reserve fund. I think, ju- overall, the board's done an excellent job in guiding and nudging and keeping all the departments in line and heading in the right direction. Financial, I think things will get better once we, uh, once we get a different president, to tell you the truth. Get the economy under control, get pri- prices down. And throw some water on this, this fire of everybody demanding more money because inflation's eating up, eating up their income. So, but I'm, I'm very pleased and satisfied with the progress the hospital's made and, and is planning to make. The Western Clinic, it's gonna happen. May not happen on our clock, but it'll, it'll happen as the board collectively determines it's, it's time to pull the trigger on this and let's do it. There's a lot of background research goes into, you just get a piece of property count. Okay, let's, let's order some lumber and bricks and let's start this thing. Yeah, it's years of, uh, planning and developing and, and, and then you get into the dang architects and all that stuff, you know.
Chairman, Mr. Bailey is also here. He's a board member. Would you let him give his opinion?
I'd be glad to hear it. Let him speak.
How much I mean?
I'm happy to tell you what I know if you want.
That's, that's fine.
Sure.
That's fine. We appreciate you being here.
Okay. Do you want me to speak to this?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, I've been on the board for a year or so now. And I'm chairman of the finance committee. And I look at those numbers very, very carefully. And we identified a trend where the, the expenses are going up and the, the income has not gone up. Couple of reasons why income doesn't go up, and I'm moving simply by a little bit. Some of it has to do with the number of surgeons we've got and cardiologists, urologists, those things who produce a lot of income for the hospital. And we've lost some of those people. We're in the process of trying to. Uh, and we, we've spent a lot of effort in getting new ones to come. And there's a lot of effort going on, ongoing about that. That combined with the fact that, uh, Medicare, Medicaid and the third party providers that blew across Blue Shield earlier have, have changed their reimbursements. And they tell us what they're gonna pay. They even tell us, for instance, how long somebody can stay in a hospital for a particular procedure. It's not up to the doctor. It's up to them. They say that's a free day to stay. If we think they have to stay four days, but the doctor does, we don't get paid for that full day. So there's a lot of those pressures. There's a whole lot of those pressures that we cannot seem to, to identify a, a solution other than adding cardiologists, adding urologists, adding some, uh, OB GYNs and those people that produce income for the hospital. A lot of the hospital services are, are money losers. But they provide a service to this community. We feel that very strongly as a board, that that hospital is here to serve this community. It's a, it's a very, very important part of what goes on in this, in this county. And we understand it. I mean, you're never gonna make any more money on nobody. It is not. It just doesn't make money. But it's very important that we have that service. And we look at those things and say, you know, we gotta, we gotta figure out a way to do the best we can for some of these services. We simply cannot cut out services. They're important. But we're right now, we're caught in the squeeze between the, the reimbursements we're getting and, and the, uh, and inflation. Inflation's a huge deal for us too. Uh, but we look in, we look at everything we can and we dig into it every month uh, to try to look at what we can save by own, what we can do better, doctors we can bring in that will help us. Uh, and I mean, there's, there's no, I don't know anybody on that board that has a personal agenda. I would be surprised to hear that, that anybody has a personal agenda. I think everybody on that board has this county and this county's interest at, at their. I mean, they really are focused on that. We talk about that a lot. But if that hospital loses money, if we wind up eating up our surplus, if we give away, do something that doesn't make sense, then we haven't served this community because we let the hospital get in trouble. It's our job to make sure that we do a very good job. And look, I would be happy for any of y'all personally to come to any meeting and go through these numbers and take a look at it and understand it because it is complicated. It is complicated, but it's still too, too much for. And you gotta figure out how to make some money and how to preserve the hospital for the future. Because that is a very important, to me, hospitals and schools, that's really, really important in this county. So, I mean, that's my statement. I mean, I think that, I think that, is there a challenge? Yeah, there is. And some of it has to do with, with, uh, with the Medicaid, uh, reimbursements and Medicare reimbursements that we're giving. We have no control of them. We have no control over that. They tell us. So, you know, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'm not the chairman. But, uh, but, I mean, I would think that any of y'all who would like to spend the time coming to a meeting and go through those numbers with us and understand and listen to the discussion, I think you'd be happy with what you hear.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Appreciate that. Any other, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a few. Um, I appreciate Mr. Chairman. And, uh, Mr. Bailey, I agree with, uh, a lot of what you said. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Taylor has said, spoken. But I've.
But I've, I've received a lot of the same phone calls that the other commissioners have received. And so I think there's a difference of opinion in, in the directions and some of the activities that are going on over there on the, on the hospital board.
Well, can you do me something specific?
Yeah.
A phone call that's not specific, that, that's very difficult to deal with.
Well, one of the things that was just talked about and mentioned was the, the doctors that are, that are leaving and the negotiation tools that aren't being utilized for negotiating better salaries or better, better pay for the doctors and nurses and that's, that's some of the, the items.
That's the same situation across the country. I mean, doctors come and they go.
We're not recruiting.
When they move, it's better.
Let, let him, let him speak.
We're not recruiting any, from what I understand. And as I said a few minutes ago, you're about to lose your, your cardiologists. And the, the, I don't, I don't know what the profitability, you said there is no profitability with the OB-GYNs, that's not a moneymaker. I, I don't know that.
Not, not OB, not GYN.
OB, okay. I don't, I don't know what the, what those dollar figures are, but I do know that if we don't have them, then it's gonna be a more significant problem. So, I mean, I, I think you have to, you know, you, you've got to pay them, you've got to come to terms somehow. You got, maybe not where they want to be, and maybe not where they're being held at right this minute, but there's, there's got to be a happy medium somewhere in there. And I, and I feel like, from, from the understandings I have, that, that that's not what's happening.
Mr. Sheen.
Thank you, Ron.
I can tell from your conversation, you probably ought to go a little bit further and talk to some other people before you go with what you just said. There's two sides to this story.
I understand.
And if you knew the other side, I guarantee you wouldn't say what you're saying. That's all I would say.
I've, I've had several conversations and they've basically come back to the same, the same thing.
Well.
I haven't asked for, I haven't asked what side they're on, what side of that fence you're on. I just know what, what I'm being told. And I know that the, the best interest of that hospital is the best interest of this board. So, and as has been stated up here, it's our responsibility, it's this board's responsibility to appoint the best candidates, qualified candidates to all the boards. There's the hospital board, the ABC board, the airport, whichever. There's a zillion boards. And I don't want to diminish our appreciation for these people, because they don't have to, you know, they're, they're, y'all are val, giving your time, volunteering your time to, to serve. So, and we appreciate that, but like I say, we have an op, a, a responsibility to evaluate the actions and, and the direction that these boards are, are going and, and, and act accordingly. So if we make a decision tonight, it may be the right decision, it may be the wrong decision, but we have to do what we feel like is, is in the best interest of Carter Healthcare. And, and I'm going with the, the information that I've received and I determine is, is accurate. I know Mr. Taylor says it's, it's probably not, but I feel overwhelmed and I think there's some of the other commissioners up here that feel that as well. So, so to that point.
Okay. I think he's not finished yet.
Yeah. No. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so to that point, due to the concern, due to our concerns, in the best interest of the whole county, because that's the county facility, and, and we're responsible for its, ultimately responsible for its operations, and the, the interest not being protected adequately, as, as unpleasant as it might be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to, to remove a few members of that board. I will make a recommendation or a motion to, to remove Mr. Claude Wheatley, Mr. Julius Taylor, and Dr. Jeffrey Moore. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
I haven't heard any justification for it. What are their offenses or crimes or wrongdoing or incompetence or what?
I think the justification is.
I mean, I'm a fault as a sitting county commissioner and I have a sitting member on the hospital board that nobody came to call me. They go to call you. You want to be on the hospital board?
No, I do not.
The doctor, the board, the real.
I, I.
Me, that's a real shock.
I didn't tell, I didn't tell anybody who to call. I didn't ask anybody to call me.
All right. Any other, any other, any other comments? All right. I'm, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of removing those three individuals from the hospital board, please raise your right hand. All right? All those opposed? Again, I just want to make one comment. Good people serve on these boards and sometimes they get locked. And I think that the commissioners, at least my opinion is, is that we're in a locked position with the hospital right now. And we don't have to do this. We don't have to, we don't have to go and do this stuff, but sometimes you have to do this stuff. Sometimes you have to break that lock. Sometimes it does give somebody another opportunity to do these, do these processes. The hospital board has 11 or 12 members. It's gonna be fine. It's gonna get through these issues. Sometimes you just gotta break the monotony, and that's what we're doing tonight. Whether we're right or wrong is one thing, but I do, I do suggest that all of us commissioners get involved with the hospital and go check and see what exactly is going on, because it is the first or second best thing that we have going for this county. So I'll leave it at that. Item number, our last item of the night is the, is the Commissioner comments. And I'm going to, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Sheen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna hold any further comments. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
To tell you the truth, I'm too disgusted to hear any comments.
Okay, Commissioner Mansfield?
I just wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. It's tough being in this position. I don't wish no anybody.
All right. Commissioner Quinn?
I'd like to thank Dee and Tommy and all of their staff for all the hard work that it takes to put that budget together. And I would like to wish everybody a very happy and very safe Fourth of July. I'd also like to mention, I'm wearing my Carter Community College pin, which I wear with pride every day, but today I'm wearing it with a sense of sadness with all those our community college family members, a very dear member of this past weekend, Mr. Nate Branson. I just wanted to ask you to keep that fine young man, one of the most earnest people I've ever met. Everything you want as a colleague, as a friend, as an instructor. So please keep this family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday was Father's Day. Hope everybody had a happy Father's Day. Mr. Leroy Golden passed away, longtime barber and a community icon over at Golden's Barber Shop in Morehead. Certainly one of the prayers, be with the family, Chris and Kevin, Ms. Kay, Michael, all of them. I didn't get all the while I wanted to night. I wanted to give the schools a little more money. But it's about a 5% increase over last year. We're giving more money, another million and a half. We are matching the capital request. I'm hoping we can get to a point where it's 4%, 5% more each year, try to work together. I keep wanting to meet in face to face and try to learn more about it. I know they have federal dollars, state dollars, and local dollars. It's, it's a, it's a big piece. I would like to have done a little more, but I'm hoping next year with the revow, we will be able to do a little more and, and continue to provide for our schools like we have. But we are one of the top funding counties in the state. And I know this might, might not be what some want to hear because it's not everything, but I, certainly we want to put our students first and our schools first and, and really all our county employees and our county citizens that serve on boards or, or just regular citizens. So, you know, a lot of tough decisions out here tonight, a lot of things you have to do. Sometimes the things you have to do definitely aren't very easy and they're, they're hard and people get mad and feelings get hurt, but it is what the majority feels is best for the county as a whole. So with that, I hope everybody has a happy Fourth of July and stay safe, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. I wanted to congratulate Shai and Lindsay and Janet for the, for the Jamie Hicks Long Award. That means a lot to us as commissioners and the Carter County family. It's, it's, it's an honor to have great people working for us, and that name is, is just so high up on all of our thoughts and, and our minds. Jamie was such a, such a great person. And I wanna, I just want to say again that, you know, as commissioners, one thing I've learned is you can sit here with your, you can sit here on your hands and not do anything, or you can try to make a difference, and I think that's what we're trying to do. Again, Commissioner Travis said it's not an easy job, but you know, it is, it is, it is a great job. It's a great responsibility. And thank you to our fine people that put the budget together. It's probably one of the smoothest budgets we probably have ever gone through. I want to thank my co-chair here for all his help and guidance. I'm not gonna need you much longer. But again, I do recommend that us commissioners visit the hospital board and get involved, and I think that would be a good sign for everyone. And with that, we need to go into closed, closed session. So I'll have, take a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 for the limited purpose of discussing A1 approval for May 20th, 24 closed-session minutes and A3 attorney-client privilege.
All right, got a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.